It's even gone up five percent since we set these goals. So I am going to be a board member that asks a lot of questions. I do a lot of research. I make myself knowledgeable on the issues. And I'm not going to just sit back at a board meeting and just mock and just look and be negative. We have to be positive. You are our most precious valuable that we have. And the teachers are the most valuable assets that we have. The custodians alike. I represented them for 25 years. So we have to make sure that we're reaching out to you. We're gonna change the board meeting if we get elected. We're no longer gonna have it here. Because I don't like sitting back there in the back and feel like I'm at a movie. And I have to walk down the aisle down here, kind of intimidating to get up there. We should have it where we can sit around. We have a student representative. We hear a report. And we have a productive meeting, not talking about contractors. Because let me tell you, yes, we need to run this school issue as a business. But there's a business side of the district that we hold the superintendent responsible for. And then there's the side of the education for you. When I look at the agenda for our school board meetings, if there isn't things on there that deal with you, deal with your academics, deal with where you're going in the future, I don't want it on the agenda. Yes, we can do a consent agenda on what we bought, what we did. But that's the superintendent. That's why we evaluate them. Nobody wants to be held accountable. Some people talk about transparency. Well, transparency, ladies and gentlemen, is not just... The term that just came out about alternative facts, and then there's facts. Well, listen for the facts. Don't listen to alternative facts. Because you, as younger adults, are impressed by things that you hear. But don't just take it for granted and Google it and say, "Look at the answer. It's right." Those are alternative facts. When you hear somebody saying somebody's putting money in their pocket, that's alternative facts. Why don't you go to the sources? Go to the police department? File a report? You've got the evidence that you need, but don't give alternative facts. File charges. Make something accountable. Thank you.
We're gonna ask that you can submit your cards. We're almost halfway through the form. And these gentlemen will pick them up and go submit their cards. And we'll move on to the next candidate, Mr. Headetah. Same question. When considering the district's educational issues, are you open to getting opinions and input from students themselves?
Of course. That's the reason we're here. It's about them. It's how we can mold their education along with the teachers that are teaching them. And the administrators that are administering the teachers. So it's important that they have a say-so. Everyone has a seat at the table. And can voice their opinion on where they want to go in education. Where we're strong. How we can tutor, how we can mentor some of these kids. Reaching from the kid on the bottom of the totem pole to the kid that's very high on the totem pole. We need to get them all together and on the same page and in the same direction. When you have everyone pulling in separate directions, you're going nowhere but spinning your wheels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sirano. Mr. Sirano, same question. Would I repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay. When considering the district's educational issues, are you open to getting opinions and input from the students themselves?
Of course. I think the students are very important. The teachers need to voice their opinions without retaliation. And administrators also need input to give their output to me or to the board. One of the things, Mr. Chavez, about adopting the eighth grade class, I think that's a very good idea. My plan is, if you looked at the back of the room, you see Mrs. Connie Valdez. She was the first Hispanic president of a college in the United States. She was also my sister-in-law. And I would like my stipend to go to a scholarship for some seniors. Or I think it's a thousand dollars per year. If it's more than that, then there would be more than one scholarship in her honor. And would be given at the end of the year to the deserving students. I also think that when we speak about the children and not having enough books, supplies, as Mr. Chavez spoke... All right, sorry. Mr. Headetah, I think this is imperative that we solve the problem, whatever it takes to get this done. We can go on and on. And I know I talked about the past, but the future is very important to you. You as sophomores, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We need to give a better school district, and we need to start now.
Thank you, Mr. Sirano. Question number four. As you can see, we're not gonna be able to go through 40 questions, but we do as many as we can. Question number four, Mr. Headetah. What plan will you implement to bring better resources, such as textbooks, to the schools?
Once we count for where the money's at, the resources, we give that up to our superintendent. And he tells us what we're lacking and how to get that money to those people. Right now, I think it's just chaotic. For this gentleman, what's going on and stuff? I mean, he's probably wearing 10 different hats trying to figure out where's... Well, he came into a fire pit. So I think we need to get the board to be on the same page. Work together instead of the fractions. And let the superintendent do his job. That's basically what he's here for. He shouldn't be having to answer for ped and all that. He should be taking care of those teachers, principals, staffers, and getting them what they need. I would like to see a... I don't agree with one board member having complete control of the superintendent's ear. I think it should be three, four that meet with him and no closed door. That's what I would do to get resources to these teachers and students.
Thank you.
Let him do his job.
Thank you. Mr. Sirano, same question. What plan will you implement to bring better resources, such as textbooks, to the schools?
Well, right now, I don't think we have a grant writer. I think a grant writer would be essential in getting monies that the state, like Mr. Chavez stated, I think the... If everybody... Some of you don't watch the news, but the governor and the legislator is gonna take money from our school district, or all the school districts. And in order to counter that, I think we need a grant writer that can go out. We live in a district, a very poor district. And I think that we need this grant writer to go out and write grants so we can get computers, PowerBooks, whatever we need for our students to succeed in.
Thank you, Mr. Sirano. Same question, Mr. Chavez?
Dr. Headetah, first I want to say that Espanola is not a poor district. The state of New Mexico has what they call a state equalization formula. And that was adopted in 1972 to be able to distribute money across this state to the disadvantaged communities and the oil field advantages. So every school district in New Mexico gets the same weight factor per student. You have 3,659 students at Espanola School District. And that is a weighted number that goes across the formula. And that's what derives about a $30 million budget. So let me talk about the adoption of the books. Yes, I'm very resourceful. I went last night to take a look at what does Espanola get for instructional material this year? 3,692 students, the district you see that we need to account for, Mr. Headetah. $203,000. They arrived at that at a $57 per student multiplier. So the high school has 964 students times $57 an hour, or $57 per person, per student. Your high school gets $56,000 a year for your instructional materials. The administration, I don't know if it's true or not, but I hear they tell the teachers to just Xerox their lesson plan. To Xerox whatever they're gonna hand out, that's unacceptable. But one of the problems is, is that we have to look at the problem. It isn't that because somebody's stealing money or nobody's not doing their job. It's we're not getting enough money. And the principal will test that you have to go through an adoption. They have to adopt books. Books are up for review. Your Common Core curriculum has to have books that are going to teach you, sorry, the PARC test. So you can know whether or not you're prepared, prepared readiness for college and career. That's what PARC stands for. I hear people talk about PARC, but are you understanding what PARC is? It's a prepared assessment on whether you're ready for college or you're ready to go on to other careers. So when you took a look at the adoption of the books, I was in a conference call a couple of mornings ago. And I listened to Hannah Scandero, our Secretary of Education, talking about holding back the review of some of the content areas because of the Common Core. And there's another bill right now being introduced in the legislature, House Bill 43, that is going to take away the 50% requirement of buying from the adopted list. So that's a good thing and it's a bad thing. But your district will be able to make decisions on whether or not they're going to order from that. I think one of the board members talked about technology. We need to review how we're going to bring in the curriculum via technology. But we have to have money, folks. And money is important. So I just want to leave you with one thing. People go by the Delmorey High School and they say, "What a beautiful high school Delmorey has." Do you know that that high school cost $303 million? And it was floated by a bond? And we could talk about bonds and how they generate money? But we are not going to pass a $303 million bond here. So we need to work to a plan.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna ask one more of the prepared questions. And then we're going to go to the questions from the audience. We probably have time for a couple, and they've been given to me in priority. So the last question from the prepared questions is question number five, and it goes to Mr. Sirano. How will you encourage and support student activities throughout the district?
Well, first of all, you have to have parents involved. When my sons were in school here, it was always the same parents, same parents. Every meeting, every report card day. I think we need to get you, honor society, students, to get out there and try to get parents involved, as well as board members, as well as administrators, as well as teachers. I know teachers are bubbling the book all day. They're teaching class, and it's a hard thing to do. You can't be sending letters all the time. You can't be emailing all the time these parents. But if we don't get parents involved in this, it's evident. You see elections, hardly any parents go home. It's kind of embarrassing that they have children in the district and they don't show up to report card day. They don't show up to parent day. I think, when I was here with my children, we were here all the time. We took... I was a member of the PTO here. I was vice president. And we had the same parents. It's up to the community. It's up to the board. It's up to the administrators. It's everyone that needs to get these parents involved.
Thank you, Mr. Sirano. Mr. Chavez, same question. How will you encourage and support student activities throughout the district?
I think the student body needs to feel engaged. I think you need to feel motivated. And I would love to find out what motivates you every single morning to come to school and to realize that 44 years later, you're going to maybe run for the school board. And I heard Mr. Sirano say about his kids graduating or going to school here. You know, my two children graduated from Osalmos and then went on to the University of New Mexico. I'm not sure Gilbert, if your kids graduated from Espanola Valley High, if they've been to McCurdy. But let me just say that the only way we're going to build a school district is through accountability and transparency. And all the way your parents are going to feel comfortable about passing the bond is that there's transparency, as my Patrick next to me here said. Because they're not going to feel well. But we've gotta stop talking about alternative facts. We should start talking about facts. So when people tell you something, or your parent tell you something that you see that may be patterned or accusing him of doing things of impropriety, ask the question. I'll answer it. I have no problem answering anything to you as the students or your parents. So when we start talking about facts, and we make people feel like you're the most important thing here. Because if you know that I love you, and if you know that your parents in this community love you, we will do everything... I don't have any kids in school, but I have a grandson. He's in the fifth grade. And he said, "Grandpa, what are you doing to help me?" Well, he's in Albuquerque. But I can tell you that I care about the fifth graders here. I care about the first graders at the elementary. And if we don't start taking care of our children from the time they're born until they graduate, I would love to ask you, looking at your next step plan, if you feel that the school district has prepared you through that plan to really have you go on to college? I served in apprenticeship program. So did Gilbert. It gave us a good standard of living. But we don't have those kind of opportunities anymore. We have a construction man here that I was a professional welder, one of the best welders in the state. Construction is a very good trade to go into. But all of us are only made by our maker of what are God-given abilities. I told my mom one time that I wanted to be a jockey on a horse. And they looked at me and said, "You're never gonna be a jockey." And I look at myself now, and do any of you think I could be a jockey on a racehorse? Probably not.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Mr. Headetah, same question. How will you encourage and support student activities throughout the district?
I think we need to look at options of making it more convenient for parents to come. A lot of your parents work, so from eight to five, they're at work. After work, if you're... You guys are little, but it was like, you guys are young, you guys have probably ECA basketball, the Apple football, first-class only community classes. Our life, mine and my wife's, is filled from right after school. My kids heard an after-school program that was through a grant. We pick them up at five. After that, we quick little snack for them, and they're off to basketball practice or community classes. Wednesdays are our only slow day. So we need to get parents involved and their suggestions of how, if it's even a Saturday, that they can come. We gotta find a solution through your guys and your parents. Your parents need to speak up and say, "You know what? During the week, I have too much going on the Saturday work. Can we all meet at the school?" Engage, probably a fall festival. Do teachers meet with parents? Vice versa, network. Maybe you have a brother and sister that are in elementary and the junior high. We all meet at one school on a separate Saturday or something. Remember, it takes a village to raise a child, and we need to do that in our community. It's important. I mean, this is probably the most important election that has been in a while. Because it has gone awry. And we need to pull the reins back and check everything and make sure it's for the next year's kids. I'm sorry we failed you probably this year because of everything that was going on. And it's been a mess. And when things go awry, you guys probably got on the back burner. And they're trying to take care of the fire that's in the front. But for next year, I would like to see that where we start engaging in May. We start engaging the parents of the graduating class to the first grade class, to the kindergarten class, on how we make things easier for you guys to have parent involvement. We need something. We need ideas. I don't have them. I'm open to your suggestions. I'm open to teacher suggestions. I'm open to that guy's suggestion at the store. Anything. But it has to happen. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Headetah. Thank you. With permission of the candidates, I'd like to... We have since great questions, and we have since limited time. I'd like to write in three minutes, give you each two minutes to respond to at least a couple of the audience's questions. And we'll do the same thing with the timer instead of three, and we'll go to two at the 30-second notification, okay? But these are really good questions. We're gonna begin with Mr. Chavez, and this will give you each an opportunity at the very end to also address the audience, okay? Mr. Chavez. Our schools, especially the high school, have been lacking teachers recently. What do you plan on doing to address this major issue? How will you get it done?
Mr. Headetah, read the first part of that.
Our schools, especially the high school, have been lacking teachers recently. What do you plan on doing to address this major issue? How will you get it done?
I'm gonna stand up again because I have a thing called fibromyalgia. And my legs get kind of stiff, you know? So I asked the superintendent if it was okay if I stand up once in a while. So that's why I'm standing up, not to make any particular point or to do anything other than stretch my legs a little bit. Yes, we have a teacher shortage. But you know what, folks? Don't believe the alternative facts in the newspaper. We have a teacher shortage across America. In New Mexico, we're about 500 teachers short. Every single year, we hope that people, teachers, will retire. And we have to replace them. So every year, we have to replace them. This school district, about 35 teachers. Well, if you're coming out of college, out of educational program, and you say, "Where am I going to teach?" You might be in the internship here. You might have born and raised here. You might just love our Espanola Valley like I do. And I live over on Upper San Pedro, and I grow all kinds of vegetables, and you would love it. So I say, "What am I gonna do?" My very first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have the superintendent of schools give us board, if I'm on the board, a presentation of what is your recruitment look like when you go to a college? Because we shouldn't be sending a representative during Fair Day, Jobs Day, which you don't have here. And we're gonna bring jobs to Fair Day, Dayback, Gilberg, the Electric Union, the Pike Bitters. And we're gonna tell you about an apprenticeship program. But to get teachers here, you have to recruit them. I had an idea last night, and you might all say, "Man, that's a crazy idea." But we might make a special emergency recommendation to the legislature to bring us some additional money to be able to give maybe a $10,000 bonus. Nurses get $10,000 bonuses in some occupation. To be able to attract people here. To say, "Am I gonna go to Colorado Springs? Or am I gonna go to Espanola?" You take a look at how they're recruiting and how we're getting people here. One of the things we have to listen to is we need to get teachers that have master's degrees. And the reason why is with your dual credits, you have to have a master's degree in that content area, teaching that. So we need more teachers with master's degrees.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Mr. Headetah, same question. Our schools, especially the high school, have been lacking teachers recently. What do you plan on doing to address this major issue? How will you get it done?
I'd like to introduce a policy, probably where we do a nationwide recruitment. And probably somehow find the money to help these teachers pay off their student debt if they come to this district. It's a beautiful place to live. It's great to raise a family here. And I think if we do that nationwide, if we put out that call to bring teachers from anywhere, help them achieve their masters, I think that goes a long way in getting teachers over here. I know we have substitute teachers teaching core classes. So we need to address that through recruitment, a heavy dose of recruitment. And give them the beautiful view of Espanola Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Headetah. Mr. Sirano, same question.
Well, I don't think our superintendent has been sitting in his office not wanting to hire teachers. I think he's been diligent. He's... I think that recruitment is imperative. I think the superintendent has gone out and interviewed. I know that he's the assistant principal here. I talked to him outside, and they're... I think they're fully staffed now. Am I correct, Mr. Superintendent?
At this school?
At this school. So I guess just a few months ago, they were quite short on teachers. So I think that's a wonderful thing that's happened here. I think we have to continue. I know it's not gonna be easy. Mr. Chavez stated that there is a shortage. There's a shortage all over the country. But one of the things that I think that we haven't done is go nationwide. There's a lot of school programs in various states, Louisiana, and Illinois, in those mid-western states. I think we may need to go out and recruit there. Bring them here. Diversity is good. If we bring in different teachers, it will help our staff. They can collaborate. And I think it will make our district a much stellar district.
Mr. Sirano, thank you. The last question of the morning will go to Mr. Headetah. What other projects do you have in mind that will help?
I have a little boy. That little boy will kick and bite to go to school. But you gotta have a strong home to push that child to do better. I mean, we... It starts at home. I'm sorry, there's no other way to put it. Education starts at home. Maybe we need to start holding these parents accountable. I mean, in my line of work, all my life, I've been held accountable. I think we need to revisit that and probably put pressure on those parents to, hey, this is your child. With God's love, you bring this child to school, and we'll educate him. Educate him. Or her. I'm a big philosophy of that, you know? Both these men probably were, and their kids came out successful. It's parent involvement. It starts at home. You know, you get so many of these parents that send kids, and it becomes the teacher's problem for eight hours. We need to change that mentality at home and quit putting the burden on teachers. You guys have enough to deal with. And we need ideas, probably administrators at a state level. Parents need to take more accountability for their child. And we need to work around their schedules, probably a Saturday, a Sunday. But it does start at home. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Headetah. Mr. Sirano, same question. What other projects do you have in mind that will help us increase the graduation rate and lower the dropout rate?
Well, it's all parent involvement. The majority of the successful children that we do have, it's because they have parents that care. I know there's some students and parents that aren't as successful. But they're not all going to be teachers, lawyers, doctors. But as Mr. Chavez said, I think we made a good living being a bike bidder, being an electrician. And one of the things we gotta remember, that a lot of these parents maybe don't have the money. And they work two jobs, the mother and the father. And that's why they're not involved. They're trying to raise a young family. And in this district, I think we have a lot of that. Some of you out there may be fortunate that your parents do have a parent that works and the mother stays home. I know my wife stayed home, and I know that my parents, my kids were successful because she picked them up at school. They did their homework, and they were ready for the next day. But we're not fortunate here. Like I said before, these parents work two jobs, sometimes three. And to engage them is pretty hard. I think every teacher in here that... There's a few of you in here have the same problem to get them to a report card day. They just can't make it. They're working late. And to rectify that problem, we're gonna have to engage and try to engage these parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sirano. Last question, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, Dr. Headetah. As I was listening to Gilbert and Patrick, it just gave me a nice feeling, if you will, of how different ideas from different individuals, and how we sometimes don't listen to each other and we talk over each other. Well, I make you a promise as a board member, that I'm going to listen to you. Because hopefully, we're gonna make a change in the dropout rate. I was looking here, moving your handout last night, to increase the graduation rate 64% to 70%. Now, the state average right now, you heard the governor talk, it just went up to 71%. So the goal from 64 to 70 this year is a pretty hefty goal to set. Now, when you take a look at how you're going to get there, to get to 70%, I would suggest to the staff at the high school to start listening to you folks. Because a lot of things that we're hearing here is not on here, of how they're going to increase their graduation rate. So I'm gonna start by adopting those little kids that don't eat and help the community feed them. Because we don't feed children, and they can't learn. Number two, as you've all heard, and I'm not gonna ask you, because I don't want to embarrass anybody. Because I would embarrass when I was a senior in high school. Now, what grade level am I on? I asked my grandson the other day, who in the fifth grade, what grade level are you? And if we care about grade level from kindergarten to the sixth grade, and by the time the student is in the sixth grade, if they're not on grade level, we're in for some trouble. So right now, I heard the report last night. I saw your D rating. I'd love to talk to you about what does the D mean for this school? We should want to do better. It's only six points away from being a C. You're six points away from being a C. So that ought to be a goal, is to get us to the C and how we're going to get there. But we're going to look at where you're at every single day, and we're gonna make you feel comfortable. That I'm gonna be able to say, "You know what? I don't know how to do that. I'm not ready to do that." And we're gonna get the resources to help you do that. We will be successful together.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Before we proceed to close the remarks, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the students that have helped prepare this forum. Took a lot of work and a lot of initiative. The superintendent certainly for putting it all together. He's all about kids. I'm sure you all know that. It's good for kids. So he says, "Please help me do it," and I'm here. And then lastly, the candidates. Thank you for taking time on your busy schedules to be here. I know that you all have many, many things going on, but thank you. Students from National Society have a token of appreciation for each of you. I'd like to have them present, and then we'll go on to closing remarks, okay? So why don't we do that first? Would you like to do that for each of the candidates? We're gonna begin with Mr. Sirano on closing remarks. And you'll be allocated two minutes, once again. And would you like to share with the audience before you depart?
Well, in closing, I would... Well, in closing, I, I feel the choice is simple. Do we want to continue on the same road, or do we wanna stand up and change the system and start demanding that the district provide you, you students, with the tools for your educational success? You are entitled to a free, appropriate public education. That is your right. You, as leadership, demand it. I would be honored to serve as a new board member in the Espinoza School, Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Mr. Chavez?
Dr. Viera, uh, and this was a friend also, a ladder contractor. I received this card in the mail yesterday with a check in it of Washington, D.C., and I just love the card with this May roof. And it says on the card, and the check was in here, hundred bucks. "Don't let the fear of striking out hold you back." That's May roof. So don't let the fear of striking out hold you back as you move forward. I will tell you that Mr. Serrano said, "The choice is simple." He is exactly right. It is very simple. He has thirty years of experience as an electrical, uh, person working at the laboratory. I have fifteen years as a welder, that I can evaluate contractors on whether we have good bids or not, but that's not what I'm going in for. I don't wanna micromanage this district. The board we have now, part of it, I think the board is doing a really good job, but I think it's been micromanaged, and it's been dealing with things that are on that board that have no business there. We're gonna start dealing with things that deal with you, and I make you that promise. And when you have a representative on the board, and when the choice is simple, I've got over thirty years of experience. This is my autobiography. So I had heart surgery four years ago. I didn't go to the auto phone to have an open-heart surgery. I went to the best heart specialist at the New Mexico Heart Center. So I hope you tell your parents, and if you ever run for school board, somebody told me, you know, I got a call, I think from a Don, a text from you, and I think it's actually absolutely awesome that you folks are listening, and I hope somebody's there saying, "You know what? I wanna be a board member. I wanna be a board member of what I do, give back to the community. I wanna give back my thirty years. The thirty years that I have spent working and analyzing, I wanna use it to your advantage. I don't wanna be negative. I don't wanna talk from a negative point. If you do that, or you do that, it hurts people." That's why I was on the radio the other day, and they called your superintendent to come. And I told him on the radio to put me back on the radio, because we have to do better than that. We can't go around name-calling, accusing, we have to evaluate, hold people accountable, and make sure that you, as the students, I'll leave you alone, I said, the money that the district gets, thirty million, twenty million, incredible amount, about fifty million dollar budget, each one of you gets, this district, around ten thousand dollars. That's what they spend for your education every single year, so you earn ten grand. You know they're spending that yet? Nineteen dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Mr. Viera?
I do, I do witness, Mr. Chavez said it is, I do. I did take this serious, but my opponent did not choose to take this seriously. We didn't think it was important to voice his opinion to you guys. I hope you guys realize that. It was like my grandma once said, remember? "Dime que neres, y te digo, dime con bien te gustas, y te digo que neres." Simple. Tell me who you hang out with, who's supporting you, and I'll tell you who you are. Look who is pushing my opponent through the door. There has to be an alternative to go with on that one. So please take your time and tell your parents that I am not affiliated with any politicians. My campaign has been grassroots, not in the words of the people who are your parents and good citizens of this community. Please ask your parents to vote for me. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us, and that's a bunch of others. Thank you all for joining us.
I have a question for you guys. This man has to come up with a plan on how to pick up the graduation. You know my ideas? Every bit of what helps.
Thank you.